Hola, Jacob Mafume. Estoy aquí para decir la verdad, nada más que la verdad. Así que ayúdame, Dios. En cuanto al Acto de Comisiones de Inquérito, entiendo, mi Señor. Estoy permitido tener un profesional legal presente. He decidido, y haré la solicitud a la comisión, que ejerzo ese derecho. Y conmigo aquí está el Sr. Jeremiah Bamu. Jeremiah Bamu. Sí, es un practicante registrado. De hecho, mi Señor. Sí. tomé tu consejo en serio. ¿Es eso permitido? Sí, va a estar gritando cosas y escribiendo notas, si me permite, y cualquier otra cosa que se sienta necesaria y esté permisible dentro del edificio.
No se aplicó al sitio de Faraad por cambio de uso.
Sí, por cambio de uso no he aplicado.
No se notó que se publicaba en la prensa como lo es normal.
Por cambio de uso no he seguido todos los procesos por cambio de uso todavía.
También se ha seguido que no hubo aprobación por el Comité de Desarrollo de ese departamento. No hubo necesidad de aprobar eso, como es la práctica.
Los procesos por cambio de uso aún no han sido realizados. Gracias. Sí.
Así que tuvo que hacer un desarrollo aprobado.
Sabes, los planes para los edificios actuales han sido aprobados.
El plan para la Casa fue aprobado, Jacob Mafume, sí. Hubo una desviación masiva, alteración del plan. Hay un testigo que fue a la Casa número 9, el maestro Sky Master. Lo que está en este plan no es lo que está en el terreno. ¿Conferencias?
Sí, pero cuando nos...
Sí, sí, sí.
Cuando nos fuimos... Mi Señor, necesito una clarificación. Cuando nos fuimos, el fiscal anunció...
No soy fiscal.
El líder de la evidencia anunció que esto era un engaño. Ahora eso ha dañado su reputación, no solo como alcalde, sino también como oficio del tribunal. Al final, vamos a hacer... Sí, porque él... Sí. Sí, el cambio de uso no ha sido aprobado. Sí, okay, solo quería... Realmente... Sí, lo entiendo, pero, mi Señor, él es un profesional legal, como yo, como tú. Él tiene una manera de anunciar ciertos hechos desde allá. El primer hecho, cuando presenté este documento, inmediatamente dijo: "Esto es un engaño".
Y luego... Si esa no es la verdad, el engaño se relacionó con los signos, de los cuales aún se dice que fue un proceso forzado. Y voy a sugerir que...
Sí, la última vez que fuimos.
Okay, quiero interrumpir y asistir a la comisión. Y asistir a la comisión con una propuesta que tal vez el Sr. Mafume pueda guardar este tema por un tiempo mientras nuestros registros vuelven al registro sobre las cuestiones de fecha, así que hablamos de la evidencia de los procedimientos, en lugar de que se haga una delegación de uno contra el otro, para que podamos verificar si nuestro presentador de evidencia dijo eso, porque todos estos procedimientos están bajo registro, por eso insistimos en obtener estos datos. Así que si este tema puede ser clarificado, ahora vamos a proponer que vayamos a los temas de hoy, entonces tal vez después de un reanimo podemos volver al registro.
Dejemos que se ponga en marcha la evidencia. Si hay otros problemas que mantienes, hablaremos de ellos más tarde. Pero me permiten decir que tratamos el uno al otro con respeto.
Sí.
Pero debemos responder a personas y responder a personas.
Sí.
Gracias. Mi pregunta es muy simple. Hay una desviación masiva, una alteración masiva del plan en el terreno. Correcto, sí o no?
No he sido notificado de las alteraciones. Las dos planes.
¿El primer plan?
Sí.
De hecho, honrado Pochet, los planes son más o menos los mismos. Este uno fue guardado por el oficio y este uno fue...
No es solo un plan, es solo una situación.
Sí.
9, el maestro Sky, fue originalmente residente.
Sí.
Individuales residentes, alcalde, que es Jacob Mafume. Pero más tarde cambiaste esto de forma propia en tu casa de refugio.
Sí.
Eso es, la alteración es fair.
Okay, sí.
Así que no hubo una desviación masiva de los individuales en la casa de refugio.
Sí, ¿estás de acuerdo? Por ejemplo, todos estos cuartos ya no están ahí. Ahora tenemos cuartos más pequeños. La cocina ya no está ahí, todo. Ahora tenemos cuartos más pequeños entre 60 cuartos. ¿No es correcto? ¿No es común?
¿60 cuartos?
Sí. No estoy al tanto de los números de los cuartos.
Okay, pero ahora tenemos cuartos más pequeños.
Probablemente, pero duermo.
Podemos ir a inspeccionar si queréis.
Sí, no, no...
Podemos ir con este plan.
Sí, podemos ir a inspeccionar y ver. No estoy al tanto de los números de los cuartos, eso es un hecho. No estoy al tanto...
Pero han habido alteraciones por parte del presidente.
Sí, han habido alteraciones, pero no estoy al tanto de los exactos números de los cuartos.
Así que aprobó las alteraciones. ¿Tu intención era que tu estudiante de la Universidad de Yit no fuera correcto?
Bueno, personalmente no aprobamos las alteraciones. La aprobación se hace en el Consejo de la Ciudad, que aún no hemos aplicado.
Pero esto es lo que querías alterar, el presidente y el comisionado.
Sí, eso es lo que quiero.
Entonces fue un deseo de ir al comisionado.
Así que todas esas alteraciones no están en términos de los estatutos, estatutos de consejo, porque hemos solicitado aprobación.
Sí, hemos solicitado aprobación.
Así que eso es incorrecto.
Los estatutos de consejo permiten...
Eso es incorrecto.
Los estatutos de consejo permiten regularización.
Pero para regularizar, regularizas es incorrecto.
Así que no es incorrecto.
Para ser incorrecto, entonces regularizas, ¿no?
En anormal, sí.
Es una cuestión de semántica, ¿no?
Sí.
Así que, Jacob Mafume, estás en el apex de la Ciudad de Faraad. ¿Eres alcalde?
Bueno, soy.
Sí, no hay duda de eso.
No, no estoy dudando. Soy en el apex.
El alcalde haciendo un desarrollo aprobado. ¿Es eso lo que querías que la comisión hiciera? ¿Hacer un desarrollo aprobado como está aquí?
El desarrollo puede regularizarse y está dentro de la ley regularizar el desarrollo.
¿Por qué iniciaste un desarrollo incorrecto en primer lugar? ¿Por qué hiciste eso? ¿Por qué no buscaba una aprobación? Esto es lo que esperamos de los abogados, otras personas que no son abogados, que no están en el empleo del consejo, que no son alcaldes, personas ordinarias, no del alcalde, haciendo desarrollos aprobados.
¿Y la pregunta?
Bueno, parece que no estoy prestando atención.
No, 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 no es de la parte emocional.
Sí, es...
La pregunta que quiero hacer es, ¿por qué hiciste eso? ¿No hubo algunas alteraciones pendientes a la regularización?
Sí, lo hemos subido a los planes. Lo hemos subido al Consejo de la Ciudad. Su intención es entonces convertirlo en una casa de refugio.
No es bueno, lo entiendo.
Sí.
¿Por qué entonces comenzaste a permitir la construcción antes de aprobar?
Mi comprensión, en términos de problemas prácticos en el terreno, porque a veces una construcción tarda un poco de tiempo. Puedes empezar a construir, sea un supermercado, un hotel, y en algún punto, cuando estés a punto de empezar el proceso, puedes luego hacer una solicitud para el cambio de uso.
De hecho, según los hechos, incluso las fronteras fueron alteradas. Las fronteras, las alteraron.
¿Las fronteras del stand?
Sí, incluso todo el plan de la casa, incluso las alteraron. ¿Cuál es tu comentario?
Eso no ha sido notificado. Si le das el plan al inspector, porque debes recordar que hay un arquitecto y un edificio. Si pierden la frontera, habrá una anotación en el plan de que esta frontera ha perdido y que debe ser corregida de esta manera. Y estoy seguro de que si hubo una desviación de una frontera o una pared que debería estar ahí, o la altura o la anchura no es correcta, eso es un problema técnico que puede ser abordado.
Okay.
Pero no se notaba.
Estás al tanto de que tienes una política de algunas estructuras legales. He visto que las están destruyendo. ¿Es eso correcto?
Esas que no pueden regularizarse, ¿sí?
Incluso aquellas que fueron construidas sin incluso aprobación. Hemos visto que las están destruyendo.
Hay estructuras que pueden regularizarse. Esas no van a ser destruidas. Los oficiales del consejo les adviernen de que si sigues este proceso de regularización, tu estructura no va a ser destruida. Luego hay otras estructuras que no pueden regularizarse. Esas van a ser destruidas. Así que hay dos procesos en el consejo. Uno, puedes hacer una estructura, la regularizas, no se destruye. Haces otra estructura que no es capaz de regularizarse. Se puede deshacer o te piden alterarla hasta el extremo.
¿Podrías hacer eso? ¿Usas tu posición? Por eso acabas de construir estos planes sin ninguna aprobación.
Lo he subido a los planes para la aprobación y estos son los planes...
La Casa fue aprobada, pero las desviaciones no fueron aprobadas. ¿Tú has admitido eso, Jacob Mafume?
Sí, ¿cuál es la extensión de las desviaciones? Si se trata de la pared perimétrica, entonces es una desviación material.
Pared perimétrica.
O la pared perimétrica...
Y los cuartos.
Si se trata de los cuartos, los cuartos pueden expandirse si se vuelven demasiado pequeños. Pero si estamos hablando de los problemas materiales sobre un plan en la pared perimétrica.
Okay, no hay problemas por ahora.
Gracias, alcalde Mafume, por la clarificación ante la comisión.
Gracias por pedirnos venir.
Te voy a dar algunas preguntas, donde necesito claridad de tu oficina. Tengo un constante que se hizo por Jacob Mafume en 2018.
Sí.
Concerniendo las declaraciones que se hicieron en términos de los audios del consejo.
Sí.
¿Estás al tanto de ellos?
Sí, estoy al tanto de ellos.
Una de las mayores preocupaciones fue el problema de la sobrecarga en el consejo.
Sí.
¿Es eso verdad?
Sí, es verdad.
¿Cuál es la situación ahora? ¿Cuántos empleados tienes en el consejo, si estás al tanto de ello?
Sí, solo tenemos menos de 10.000. Se supone que tenemos un establecimiento de 12.000, pero la situación actual en el terreno está justo debajo de 10.000, 9.000 y algo.
Pero, ¿cuál es la causa de las proporciones de la tierra en 2018 hasta el período de 2020, cuando el Ministerio luego recibió una carta de preocupaciones para que puedas racionalizar esta situación?
¿Qué?
¿Cuál fue la causa?
La causa en ese momento, si me permito entender, fue porque llegamos en 2018 y cuando inquirimos sobre por qué había tantos miembros de la organización y si necesitábamos ellos, nos dijeron un número de razones. Pero una de las razones es que nuestras operaciones son manuales, son demasiado manuales, hay una mecanización muy limitada en el camino. Tenemos tantos agentes generales en términos de limpiadores de derrame, secueleros, recolección de refusos, el departamento de carretera para puertos. No dependen de la mecanización. Había una sobreconfianza en las personas reales.
Así que las dejaste, ¿confirmas?
Le dejamos algunos de los trabajadores.
¿Y pagaron algunos de sus beneficios?
Algunos de los trabajadores.
Sí.
Sí, algunos los dejaron. Un número de medidas, estoy seguro, fueron adoptadas. Retiro temprano para aquellos que llegaron a la edad de retiro. Aquellos que no querían optar, saldrían. Necesitaba una copa de medidas.
Así que estabas en el oficio cuando el consejo cobró un total de 32.500 para pagar algunas de las gratuidades.
No me había dado cuenta de eso. ¿En qué año fue eso?
2018.
¿En qué mes?
No me han dado el mes, pero este es el informe de los audios que voy a hacer.
No estaba aún en el oficio.
¿Cuándo asumiste el oficio?
36.000.
32.500.
Llegué al consejo en 2018 como concejal. Luego me convirtí en alcalde en 2018, 2019, 2020. Sí.
2018, 2019, 2020, todos eran alcalde.
No fui alcalde durante ese periodo.
2018, 2019, 2020. Así que, ¿cuándo asumiste el rol de alcalde?
Los primeros recorridos se hicieron en 2020. Fui alcalde en 2020, al final de 2020, al final de 2020.
Al final de 2020.
Sí.
¿Hasta cuándo?
Sí. Había muchos tableros, pero...
Estás al tanto de eso.
Okay.
Entonces, en términos de recursos humanos o capital humano, ¿quién es la persona que se supone que emplea a miembros del exequutivo en el consejo?
¿Quién es la persona que se supone que emplea a miembros del exequutivo?
Sí.
Son... Bueno, había varios miembros del exequutivo.
Pero, ¿es tu mandato emplear a ti mismo como alcalde?
No.
¿Tienes un mandato de emplear a cualquier clase de funcionario?
No, no hay mandato. Todo el empleo se hace a través de comités.
A través de comités.
Sí.
Quiero llevarte a un oficio donde hemos recibido evidencia de que creaste un puesto para un Sr. Kashangura, a quien llamaste estrategista para el consejo. ¿Cuándo trabajó Kashangura?
Kashangura no es un empleado del consejo, es un ingeniero. Kashangura llegó durante el tiempo en que estaba fuera de oficio.
Así que, ¿puedes...?
Sí.
Dijiste que es un ingeniero para el consejo.
No, 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 no. Es un ingeniero, es un ingeniero bastante reconocido. Es un ingeniero eléctrico. Es un consultor. Ha trabajado mucho con Sesa y muchos otros.
¿Puedes esperar?
No.
¿En qué capacidad aparece como consejo? ¿Escuchas el informe de su deber?
No.
¿Este puesto...? ¿Me permites terminar?
Okay.
Aparece en algunos reuniones de consejo, te daré los días, como estrategista. Así que mi pregunta fue, ¿quién le dio la descripción de estrategista para el consejo?
Permítame explicar el problema de Kashangura en detalle. Cuando el alcalde Ian McConney llegó al oficio, quería hacer una análisis estratégico de la organización a través del consejo, como concejal, como rol. Así que no era... No sé qué evidencia dijo.
¿Bajo qué términos?
Luego, bajo los términos que...
¿En qué términos? ¿Fue un consultor?
No...
¿O un ingeniero, como has descubierto?
Voluntario. No recibió pagos del consejo. No recibe pagos del consejo. Tenía una relación con el concejal Ian McConney. El concejal Ian McConney proviene del sector cooperativo y el consejo estuvo de acuerdo con el alcalde McConney de que podríamos tenerlo como un asesor estratégico, pero no como empleado del consejo.
Así que, ¿estás confirmando que Kashangura entra y sale del consejo todos los días por no remuneración?
No todos los días. Es un consultor. No recibe... Sí, viene por no... Viene por no remuneración en absoluto. No tiene puesto. Solo era para aconsejar al alcalde sobre el cambio estratégico.
Sí.
Para poder...
Correcto, eso fue la idea de McConney, pero cuando viniste, ¿adoptaste a Kashangura como quién?
Cuando vine, él llegó a mi oficina y dijo: "Este es el trabajo que he hecho". Ha entrevistado al consejo en estrategia. Le pregunté: "¿Te estamos pagando?" Él dijo: "No, no estamos pagando". Él tiene un reporte muy masivo, que es muy útil.
¿Entonces lo mantienes bajo qué términos?
Bajo... Sabes, está terminado. Está terminado. No lo mantuve.
Durante tu mandato, durante el tiempo que estaba trabajando, ¿bajo qué términos lo mantuviste como voluntario, como consultor o como...?
No alteré los términos que él había venido. Debo hacerlo.
¿Dónde están los términos?
Deberían estar en la resolución del consejo si la comisión...
¿Fuiste parte de este comité?
No, no estaba.
Porque hemos recibido evidencia de que luego proponías que Kashangura debía recibir lo que se llama apreciación. Así que quería entender qué tipo de compromiso es eso, que paga una apreciación.
No, no...
Estábamos produciendo minutos, están fuera de tu ciudad.
Sí.
Te solicitaron una apreciación para un Kashangura siendo estrategista.
Sí.
¿Cuál fue eso? ¿Solo explícalo? Permítelo terminar y luego puedes responder. Y estoy seguro de que responderás adecuadamente si me permites terminar.
Sí.
Así que cuando se propuso en ese comité que debías pagar a un Sr. Kashangura una apreciación, ¿bajo qué términos de empleo, consultancia fue eso? ¿Solo explícalos?
Creo que cuando apreciamos...
¿Bajo qué términos?
Sí.
¿Aún está en tu oficio?
No, no está.
En ese momento en particular, ¿estaba trabajando como estrategista?
Cuando estaba llegando. Sí, sí, él llegó.
Después de Ian McConney, ¿retuaste...? ¿Retuaste a él como estrategista?
Sí, después de Ian McConney, lo permití a que terminara su informe.
Eso es lo que estoy preguntando ahora.
Y luego este tema de la apreciación.
No soy el que propuso.
¿Fue pagado?
No, no fue pagado.
¿Ninguno lo propuso?
Sí, estoy seguro de que se propuso una apreciación, pero...
Los ministros aseguran que hubo una propuesta.
Pero el aprecio de los esfuerzos no es necesariamente... Aprecio, no son cifras.
Pero confirmas que la apreciación fue propuesta en esa reunión.
Sí, hubo una propuesta de una apreciación.
¿Bajo qué términos? Esa fue mi pregunta. ¿Fue un consultorio o un voluntario?
No, ¿qué pasaría una vez que haya una propuesta como esa? Luego iría al... Porque iría al secretario. En ese caso, si hay reuniones al secretario de la cámara.
No, 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 escuchamos, pero cada persona... ¿Y bajo qué términos? ¿Y bajo qué términos? Hablamos de dos términos. ¿Bajo qué términos?
No hay... No había realmente ningún término. Solo era una propuesta. Si me permito entender, solo era un concejal. Sabes, cuando estás llevando reuniones de consejo...
Sí, sigue siendo una respuesta.
Él es un voluntario, no hay aprecio.
¿Cómo ibas a cobrar las tarifas de aprecio de un Kashangura?
Duermo que iban a... Nunca pagamos ninguna tarifa, ni intentábamos pagar ninguna tarifa.
Así que tu intención de pagar, dices que nunca fue concedida.
Tal vez los términos de la pregunta. Una, cuando reduces una apreciación en una cifra, entonces sería útil si hubiera una propuesta de una cifra en particular que está ahí en el registro o... Porque la apreciación en términos del consejo puede... Tiene muchas formas.
¿En qué forma? Eso es lo que te estoy preguntando. Que estás intentando hacer. ¿En qué forma iba a ser conveyida la apreciación a un Kashangura, este voluntario, igual que el ingeniero?
Solo espera.
¿En qué forma?
Judge, si me permito. Si entendí su pregunta directamente, ella está preguntando en qué forma la solicitud fue dada. Y el único consejo que le estaba dando era decir: "Si eres el que hizo esa solicitud, necesitas saber ese específico y eso es lo que necesitas".
No, pero esa pregunta viene aquí. Eso debería venir de mí. Debo ser capaz de responder la pregunta.
All right. Estaba solo mirando... Así que, Judge, eso fue precisamente mi intervención. Escucho a Judge y me acuerdo. Mi intervención estaba claramente en si la persona era justa o no, pero tomo la palabra de la judge porque... En el Judge, podemos proceder. Sí, podemos proceder.
Permítelo de nuevo. Si vamos a elaborar una petición de pregunta, entonces... La pregunta que se elaboró por el Sr. Mayor, ahora sabemos que alguien propuso una apreciación. ¿Y en qué forma fue?
No tomamos consejos en eso. La propuesta no formuló...
¿Esta tarifa de aprecio fue alguna vez recibida?
No.
Yes.
Yes, let's continue. Was the post or the duties you were giving Kashangura part of the city council organogram?
He didn't work for, for council, he didn't execute any duties from my understanding. He had no post, he had no duties.
But he would report to townhouse on occasions?
He would come to, in, to investigate what he needed for the.
And who was he reporting?
Then, then he would come to state.
Yes. Townhouse. I'm not here today.
And who did he report? Who did he report to?
He, he, he would not report to anyone eh as far as I'm, I'm aware, certainly not to me. What he would do was to go, eh, he would work with the town clerk eh, he was then, go department by department, do evaluations and come up with eh.
Correct. So are you trying to tell me that you are having this freelance engineer roving in the offices of the townhouse without anyone's authority?
No, no, he had the authority.
Who's authority?
The authority of council, may I, I indicated that Mayor Ian McConney.
But you, he left and then you came in. So what you are avoiding is to admit that he was also under your authority, is that?
He's done tremendous work. If, if you look.
No, no, to answer the question, was he also working under your authority?
This was a fresh guy. He was once under Ian McConney.
Yes, that's fine.
Asking for doing two certain things and he was responding.
Well, I, the nature of the work was not the, like you would then report to, to the mayor. Eh, it was more to come up with a consolidated report, not to execute any ju, any duties.
And submit to who the report?
To the mayor, then we submit to council.
Exactly.
If the mayor didn't want him, you would have asked him to leave.
Yes.
Ian McConney.
If he didn't want him, he would have, then have gone back to council, to us, yeah, yeah.
With a view of getting him out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you didn't like him, you would have done the same.
Yeah, 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 well, I would have done the same.
And so you also allowed him during that tenure, he left to do or to continue with what he was doing?
Yes, yes.
So would I be wrong if I said he reported to you to cancel through you?
Yes, he did report to me.
If you'd have said long ago, councillor, you are a legal technician.
Uh huh, he reported eh, and the town clerk, yeah.
Yes. Is there no business strategist or officer at the council?
A business.
Already, yes, a business strategist. Do you not have a business strategist for council who is employed?
We have a business strategist.
Whose name? Can you give us the name?
Um, she's eh, well, I know her first name, Titi.
No, she's the manager of the business unit.
Uh huh.
But we are also aware that we have what is called a strategy grants manager. What is his name?
A strategy and grants manager?
Yes.
Eh, is a gentleman?
Yes.
I, I.
Whose mandate is exactly the same as that which was being executed by this freelance engineer?
Well, he, he has not given us.
Do you know Mr. Jablan Dwee?
Jablan Dwee?
Yes, have I heard of him?
I know of a Dwee, but he's not eh, I thought he worked in HR, eh, human resources.
His, his name, Jablan Dwee.
Jablan Dwee? No, I don't know him.
We have received evidence that there is a strategy and grants manager whose name is Jablan Dwee. He reports for duty every day.
O J B.
I.
So we now wonder what this Kashangura was doing when there is someone who's occupying the post.
I've never seen a report from that Jablan Dwee. I don't know him.
Yes.
He has never eh presented to my office.
Or is it that you never cared to know about him since you were biased towards your Kashangura?
No, we have ten thousand employees, but eh, if, if, if there was someone producing a strategy for, 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 for the council at that level, who would certainly be a person who should be talking to us regularly? He, he has not presented to us any strategy. I, oh.
You are just not aware of the, of the existence of this manager.
Yeah, I've not.
When you go back, go and ask for one of the council employees called Jablan Dwee.
I'll ask for him.
Yes, and he works at the strategy and grants department. And their role is to produce strategies for council. So we are wondering why this Kashangura continued even during your tenure and what his purpose was?
We can submit the report that he did to the commission.
Yes.
It's eh, it was submitted to council. Eh, it is one of the best reports I've read.
Don't judge it?
Yeah, but we will submit it. Hmm.
Yes. So I will also ask the reason why this famous freelance engineer was present in a full council meeting on the first of October twenty twenty.
Twenty?
Was he, was he, was he in?
Yes, the mayor was in that meeting. And this Kashangura guy was part of a full council meeting on the first of October twenty twenty two.
Yes, or do you recall whether he was in?
Yes, I recall. Eh, we invited him in to present his report.
What was special about his presence when he's not an employee of council, not a councillor, not on any remuneration, just an engineer?
The council meet, the council meeting is my meeting. I am at liberty to invite.
So we are asking you, what was special about this?
Hmm.
Yes.
I have the discretion to invite eh, anyone into eh, the council meeting.
What was his role?
His role on that particular day was to present the findings of his report.
And when you invite presenters, do they sit where the executive sits or in the gallery? Because we, I, yes, where do they sit? What is the position where they sit?
They sit wherever I, wherever we, I, I say they sit. If it's a priest, he sits by my side to pray for us eh, right in front, notwithstanding that he is not eh, a council member. If you look at the council, we call priests every council meeting. It is a tradition to call a priest to pray for us. He sits where I, eh, just below where I sit.
So they're in question.
If, if it's some, eh, the, the, my visitors, they sit.
So where did he sit on this day?
In the council chambers. If I invite you. He, he said, he, he said where eh, the executives were sitting or I, I, I don't recall where he sat precisely or left to, but everything is on video. But when we asked him to come to present, he then presented.
He's an expert. He sat together with council.
Hmm.
Okay.
It, it's my meeting. It's just like this, this commission. It's the chairman's meeting. Yeah, hmm.
Who is Mr. Mgbogo?
Mr. Mgbogo Gobo is the acting IT manager.
Who, who employed this?
Oh, I found him there. He was at council.
Is he still with council?
Yes, yes.
Who did he replace?
Um. Yeah, 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 some eh, I, I forgot his name, the then IT manager.
Samson Mazooki?
Yes, yes, it's Mazooki.
What happened to Samson Mazooki?
Eh, Samson Mazooki was suspended.
Who pushed for his suspension?
The HR committee.
We have received evidence that you influenced the suspension of Samson Mazooki because he was resisting to adhere to your demands to have Quell re-engaged for the BIQ. How true is that?
That is false. Quell associates of BIQ, there is an order from the Auditor General that they be brought into council to look for lost two hundred million.
Yes, is there no way to?
No, 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 let me explain this because it is, it, no.
It's not part of my question.
But you are saying, it is part of your question.
No, you said you didn't enforce it.
You said, I want to bring back.
HR.
Quell associates, there's been an order by the Auditor General that we bring back Quell associates. There's.
So in other words, you did not bring back. It was not because of you?
It was not because of me.
Yes, so we'll go ahead with our questions. Thank you for remaining within the ambit of my questions. Is there no procurement unit which is responsible for the procurement of the BIQ at the city?
It, it is, it is there.
And you confirm it's functional?
It is functional, there are people there.
So why are you so interested in the procurement of this BIQ? To an extent that you even went yourself with your briefcase to Pras, to follow the procurement process?
One, there was an order from the Auditor General.
Did you go to Pras?
Yes, I did go to Pras.
Carry a briefcase?
No, I didn't carry a briefcase. I, I will give you the, the genesis.
But did you go to Pras?
Yes, I did go to Pras.
Who, who was, who accompanied?
Eh, the whole, the, the town clerk, the finance chair, the town clerk, eh, the procurement people, the, I mean, the whole.
That is not correct. You were never accompanied by the procurement people because we have a report from Pras which we can share with you, that they then cautioned you on the relevance of the procurement unit in terms of the public finance management units.
No, we.
That they are the ones who are responsible for following up on the procurement and not yourself as the man.
We, we.
Is that true?
No, that's all. The question then is, when you went there, did they caution?
No, we had a very productive meeting.
But did they agree to your terms because you had gone in with a proposal to directly engage Quell?
Yes.
Instead of following the bidding process?
Yes, they've agreed to our terms. We've got a letter from the ministry to procure directly from, from BI eh, from eh.
Sorry, maybe the events are different. I'm talking about the events of May when they ignored waivers, the resolution which for the special procurement management unit.
Look, they, they, look, they, if you allow me to explain briefly the procurement of the BIQ systems and its genesis.
We are aware of those.
But we, we are going round and round in circles.
Who is going round in circles?
Our budget at that time, the minister wrote to me and said that he is not approving the budget because we had not complied with the, 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 the ten point plan of the president and also the fact that we had not yet engaged in ERP for the past.
Sorry, Mr. Samson.
Yes, the letter, they communicate.
Follow up on the procurement process?
We were then given a deadline.
No, the chair kindly assists me for witnesses to remain focused on the questions directed to him. I asked him a clear question of whether it was his mandate to follow up on the procurement process of the BIQ when there is a functional procurement.
I asked you to follow this in very careful questions and answer questions which are answered. If there is a need for anyone to, to, but those questions.
I play an oversight role on all things that eh, yes, I do understand. Yes.
From now on, just then to answer questions. If there is anything you want to add, you will ask me to add.
Okay, I, I.
It's your mandate or as a mayor, it's your mandate to follow up on the procurement processes of a BIQ.
Yes.
And there is a functional procurement.
Yes, I follow, I have an oversight role on all operations of council.
That oversight including following up on bids?
On what?
On bids, on the bidding process.
I've never attended a bidding process meeting.
But so why were you at, at Pras yourself?
Because we needed an explanation as to why we were not getting eh approvals of our eh procurement of an ERP which had taken five years.
Yes.
With us communicating to Pras and back and forth.
That is the bidding process, just hold on in case you are not aware of it, of the procurement, that is the bidding process which we were following up on, which had taken long.
Five years?
Yes.
So we were supposed.
We have communications which were going back and forth.
Yeah.
From your procurement units to Pras spoke resolution year after year. That is the process of procurement. That's why I'm asking why.
Ah, it's my duty. It's my duty.
Could you not send Mr. Neva or another manager to follow up?
The managers themselves were the problem. They, they.
He is a problem?
Yes, there is theft going on at council. We have had no ERP for five years.
Are you alleging that the manager, the procurement manager at that point, who is Mr. Neva?
Yes.
Had stolen?
Yes, they are in, they are in and out. You must understand.
No, don't say must. I said, what did he steal?
The issue is, with, without an ERP.
What did they steal?
They just don't get there. He says, he said there was a lot of stealing.
At council, not at procurement. Okay. In council, there is a lot of, that's what I want to explain.
So then who, who was, who is stealing?
Who is stealing? What, what, the, the, why we have been agitated about the ERP is because.
Who is stealing?
They, they, they account stuff.
What did they steal?
Money.
How much?
In this, in, first instance, the Auditor General said two hundred million and that we should look for it. Now, it could be more because.
What convinced you that it was their department who stole?
The finance department.
Yes.
That's what the auditor.
Forensic audit done?
The Auditor General said there was two hundred million stolen, bringing back BIQ to look for the two hundred million.
Did you just say it was because of the financial director? So that we can go back to your reports?
The, the Auditor General said it because you, you have no, you have no ERP, you have gotten rid of the ERP, so we can't identify who has stolen. So they recall.
So why are you convinced that the ICT people are stealing? Because you said because the ICT people are stealing, that's why you.
I said they're stealing.
After the BIQ.
There is still, there is stealing in council. Auditor General.
Can you prove it?
Yes.
Where forensic audit is done, complaints to the police done over this thing?
We, we can't do audits because people have disabled the ERP. That's why we've not had an audit from twenty nineteen. It's deliberate by the executive. They are in management paradise.
So you had to follow it up yourself?
Yes, because since twenty nineteen, we can't do an audit because we have no ERP.
So what is the duty?
You are something, you are taking over everything from council. I'm not taking over, my oversight role.
Your oversight role, taking the role of the town.
No.
Taking the role of the procurement manager.
Look, I've got a contract.
Just answer it.
Was it necessary, was it necessary for you to go to Pras when you have got people in town, kind of, people who they want to.
They've been going.
After the, wait a minute. When even they were very commanded, they didn't want to go and follow up on this process, was it necessary?
At this, at this point, it became necessary because.
Why?
Why? Because we've been telling them to get that ERP procured twenty, from twenty nineteen. I came into council.
And they've not done that.
They've not done that. At one point, they procured one for fifty four million and we objected.
So at the, at the current moment, in eh, inform us, what is happening with the BIQ? Who's your current service provider and what are the terms?
The current service provider is one called Sage. Sage system routinely fails. Eh, eh, sometimes we go for weeks without being able to record transactions. Since, since Sage came in.
Okay.
And then, so now, we've got a letter eh, where we were authorized to do a direct procurement to BIQ and we are being assisted by the ministry to do that so that we comply with the Auditor General's recommendations and we also comply with the public accounts eh, recommendations.
Yes, yes.
And.
So you now confirm or concur with me that it was wrong for you to go to Pras?
No, I don't.
And convince them to do direct procurements without the ministry's approval?
No, I.
Now that the authority has come from the ministry and you failed to get such authority yourself, was it?
But I'm the one again who went to the ministry. I, I, look, I got, what happened is, the genesis is that the, the situation got to a point where our last year's budget, a letter had to be written to me directly by the minister to say that we have declined to approve your budget and this was reported widely. And one of the reasons that we failed to approve the budget is that your council is failing to comply with the ten point plan issued by the, the president. I then intervened, not only on the ERP issues, we had the master plan issue where I received two letters from the minister directly as mayor.
So you can hold on.
Then, secondly, I wanted to bring you.
Can you hold on just once? They have nothing to do with my questions. We are also in possession of that memo from the minister to your town clerk, not yourself.
The minister does not.
The minister directed his letter to the town clerk because he knows the role of the town clerk and that of the mayor.
Ministers don't write to town clerks.
Minister wrote to the town clerk, he said, can you get me the dossier?
The minister writes to the mayor, the permanent, the permanent secretary writes to the, to the.
Who produced this report?
Okay, I don't know, okay.
And the fact that there is now a direct procurement and a waiver from Pras is due to the reasons that the minister engaged Pras and not yourself. What do you say about that?
We engaged, we, we have engaged all these bodies. We engaged the minister, we engaged parliament, we engaged Pras. And they did a combined solution.
That is not true.
It is not true, yeah.
So now, how far have you gone with the re-engagement of eh, of, of Quell, who's your. So now how far have you gone with the engagement of, of Quell, who's your chosen service provider for the BIQ?
It has gone nowhere up to now. They, 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 they are delaying.
Quell is also delaying.
Not Quell, the procurement uh people at our city council.
Is that why you put Neva on first leave?
He wasn't there for this direct procurement and I'm not the one who put him on first leave.
Now that he had his charges on a criminal matter with John before plea, what action have you taken to engage his services at the council?
They, yeah, there are distinct uh processes here. If you get cleared, we had nothing to do with his charges at the criminal courts. If you are cleared there, you notify a council, but at the same time, you can, you are can be subject to disciplinary processes of council, whichever different standard.
Is he facing such?
That is the, the, up to the town clerk to, to, to decide whether.
No, answer the question.
He's not, I, I'm not aware. I'm not aware, not to my knowledge.
Then regarding Chisango, the former town clerk.
Yes, I.
He's in a breaking office. You also have evidence that the criminal charges which are being leveled against him when he was on before plea.
The charges uh against him, I, we suspended him or I suspended him.
Yes, you did. I, I thank you for being honest for once. You suspended the previous town clerk yourself.
Yes.
Did you have the mandate?
Yes.
What were the, what were the allegations?
I've, I've got the suspension letter. The allegation, the allegation one was the issue of the tender, the flouting of the tender. Um, the second one, the, the, the Jeluka tender, the nine million street lights tender, the, the flouting of those procedures. The next one was the issue that he has no valid contract uh of employment. Uh, the, the, or he's not produced a valid contract of employment and contrived to create a contract of employment for himself which has no council resolution and has not been approved by the local uh government board.
When did you discover about all this?
When I came back into office.
When?
Um, early February last year, around about five.
And all this while Chisango was accounted and you have not raised any issues?
No, we, I raised the issues.
When?
Oh, oh, we, I think by end of April, I asked the HR committee to ask uh the HR committee was supposed to get the executive contracts and their permissions uh of employment. That's when we discovered that he had fraudulently awarded himself uh, uh, a, a contract.
Of employment?
Yes.
But all this time you are saving you. Were you not observing all these issues?
The, his contract was supposed to be renewed uh in August twenty twenty-three.
Is it that you just became aware of it in February or perhaps it turned sour between yourself and Chisango?
No.
Because we are, we have evidence that you and Chisango were in CI to I, to the extent of you throwing files in his face, chasing him out of full council meeting.
Is it true?
No, it's not true.
The event of the first October.
We didn't.
Are they not correct?
I didn't chase him.
Chased him out, did you?
No, no, I advised him that when you are under suspension, eh, you, you save the, the suspension. If you violate the conditions of suspension, you might inadvertently commit another offense.
How about what's okay? His charges were also cleared, but did you say that you said you do not want to see him at Townhouse?
But.
And you prefer that he will be paid whilst being.
No, no, no.
Is it true?
It's not true. It's not true.
So all these people at council are lying against your name. Is that true?
You're talking about people that.
Is that true?
They're lying. If, if anybody says that they are lying, yeah.
So no one likes you there at council. Am I correct?
When I was elected, the councillors were singing, but I, I, you can't say no one likes me at council. That's such a broad generalization.
So what has happened now among me?
It, it is not.
These people are on your case.
We, because I'm correcting the wrongs that, that, that were there. We have no contract. The town clerk has no contract. The procedure is very simple. When your, your contract expires, we, 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 we renew the contract through council uh resolution. If that's not done, a casing point is the town clerk in Blawai. If that's not done, you stop work immediately and then we do the process of renewing your contract as the directive that was then in existence at the time. That process was not followed.
Okay.
So it is no contract.
So what wrong with your driver, what wrong with your driver, your allocated driver? What had he committed and employed a new driver for yourself?
Did he employ a new driver?
I didn't employ.
You received evidence that you employed a new driver when you had been allocated another driver who is in the driver's pool at the council.
Or let's put this way, the driver who was allocated to you, is this a driver enough?
They would, no, I have had many drivers uh that I'm using. We have a pool of drivers.
No, the one who allocated to you.
The one who allocated to you.
Give the name.
Give the name. Who is the one I supposed to have removed?
The one who is driving you currently, is he part of your pool?
Yes, he's part of our pool.
And the protocol officer? What is his name?
The protocol officer, Chinoputa.
Yes, your post is.
Yes.
Is there a post of protocol officer to the mayor?
No, 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 to council?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
To the mayor or to council?
To council. The way the council works.
No, I'm asking you, is there a protocol officer?
The protocol officer is in the chamber secretary. No, no.
So you created also a post of the protocol officer to the mayor, Mr. Chinoputa?
No, there's no one who has the job description, protocol officer to the mayor. It's, it's non-existent.
So what is Chinoputa's duty?
He's a prot- protocol officer period. He does our protocol, my protocol, any protocol, whenever he is present.
But he never saves anyone. His protocol saves himself.
No, he does. He saves every, the deputy mayors, the councillors, anybody who requires the protocol services if they are traveling out of the country.
Was he always in the protocol office? Tell us his history. Where did you take him from?
He, he.
You picked him?
No, I didn't pick him. He transferred the, the authorizations that he gets. He transferred from the health uh, uh, department to the protocol office.
But the HR, HR department do not have the papers for the transfer. You just walk up your protocol services. We requested for those.
They have to, they have to rectify that.
How can they rectify them when you are the one who insisted that we should be transferred?
How did I, do they have a paper of me insisting?
That's why they do not have the transfer papers.
It is a protocol.
If it was themselves.
There was an HR, how we do transfers is very simple. An HR meeting is held, there is a record of those minutes. Uh, every transfer that's done is then done through the HR office and that was done and ought to be done.
But to the contrary, there is nothing to that effect.
Then the person who is responsible for HR issues must be answerable because.
And you're going to fire them by the end of today? Like you said, what are you doing? Are you going to do that?
I'm, I'm not going to, to fire anybody.
You know what, you may, we have discovered a trend on your mark, that if we give evidence in here which links to any of your persons and services, the same day you leave this room, victimizes.
Give, give examples.
Give examples.
Yes, I'll give an example of Marara's scenario.
And who else?
No, no, let's just Marara first.
Let's do it first.
No, I haven't.
What happened soon after you left?
I haven't.
We are informed that you insisted that Mabena Moyo signs the suspension letter which he then goes for some time until he had a request for an opinion from.
My, 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 I couldn't have insisted that he uh signs a suspension letter for Major Marara. Major Marara does not have a contract with the city council. He, he resigned in his first post as the M and E advisor. After resigning from that post, he then, he came back.
So why, my question is, why would you then implement such issues soon after?
No, I, I wasn't the one who implemented. It, there was a resolution in December twenty eighteen.
Coincidence is too high there.
No, but.
A day after he appeared.
Major Marara, I can, I can, I can.
A day after he appeared, you forced the acting town clerk Mabena Moye to suspend him and he asked for reasons why he should be suspended. And you said just find a way to suspend.
No, 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 no.
And you quoted, you quoted his evidence and said, let's libate him.
That's a lie. That's a lie. That's a lie. I didn't.
It is also a lie.
Yeah, I never said that to, 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 to Mabena Moye. They.
And the coincidence is too high. A day after he appeared.
I, I, let, let me, okay, let me indicate.
The coincidence is too, is too high.
I can tell.
No, no, don't worry about that.
Don't worry about that one.
Yes.
Coincidence is too high.
I did not. There was a resolution, my position and my, and I'm, and that is my considered position. My considered position, we did, they were, first that we created.
We know about the job evaluation is the one we want to tell us about. We are aware of that, but our question.
Then we then, I then.
Just answer the question please.
Yes.
We know about the job evaluation.
I didn't, I did not.
But our worry now is that December, the resolution is passed.
I did not victim.
No, no, answer. Listen very carefully, very, very carefully.
Our main worry, man, is that.
That is a great question. Please, just prepare for that.
Okay.
Our main worry is that in this, on this December, in the previous year, it is twenty twenty-four, the resolution is passed by the committee.
Yes.
Then nothing happens until Marara comes to testify sometime in February. Then a day or two, let me finish. Then a day or two later after he testifies evidence which some people felt was against you. He gets a letter of suspension. Someone is forcing the town clerk to suspend him, reasons not profan. Then an agent, HR committee meetings is held under the guise of buying stationery and toilet papers. Then terms of reference of the HR committee are changed to facilitate the demo, the, 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 the abolition of the post of Marara. Isn't that coincidence too high?
Do you remember the, the?
I, I'm, there, there are many.
Events?
Yes, the sequence of events is, 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 I'm not clear about because I'm not the one who caused the HR uh committee meeting. If I had called a council meeting to deal with that issue, the HR meeting is, is called by the chamber secretary and.
Please note, the chamber secretary's agenda for the meeting was agent procurement of toilet paper and stationery, not changing the terms of reference of the HR committee. We have that.
Yes, so the, the, if a meeting was called for that, then no one or you cannot change the agenda of the meeting to just like that.
That's what he did. Can you confirm that?
That's what the HR, that's the HR committee chair did.
Yes, because can you give me that notice for the meeting? It was a notice of the meeting for agent procurement of toilet paper and stationery where the HR committee.
I think.
The Saturday. The December result.
Uh huh.
Nothing's done.
We.
I have to, this time, for a decision, after we give evidence here.
The.
Is that a process?
The point is that the, the last meeting of December is the meeting that we close council. So we.
Is that a coincidence or a progression?
Yeah, it's a progression of events, it's not a coincidence.
So what would also, what would be your comment if I'm to tell you or to inform you that the chamber secretary called for an HR committee meeting under the guise of an agenda to purchase stationery and toilet paper?
And he changed it.
Then he changed it. The HR committee met and made resolution, changed this terms of reference under that meeting, which then resolved to abolish the post which Marara is occupied.
That, that would be false. The first, there is, Major Marara has no post in council. He, he has no contract. He re.
I did not ask you about that. I'm talking about the meeting agenda.
How do you abolish what is not there?
The meeting agenda against what?
It's, that, that one is not my meeting. I, I have no knowledge.
What is your comment, since you are also a council?
That, that meeting, I don't, I didn't call for that meeting. I don't participate in that meeting and that's not my meeting.
And the coincidence is also very high. This was called, there's an agent meeting on the twenty ninth of January. This is a copy from your chamber secretary. You can read for us the reference of that meeting. What was the goal, the agenda?
Is to invitation to attend an agent meeting, critical shortage and absence of printing equipment, accessories and stationery across council departments.
Yes, then you can follow through now. What was resolved? That the HR committee changes its terms of reference.
True.
You can do this, but won't have time for that. Maybe Michael can pick for you if you are looking for.
Yes, but the way this, this works, when committees meet, they then bring the, all what they've decided on because it's not valid until I.
Are you saying, Nando?
Just for the question. All, all that we are, we are aware. The person is.
Yes. Yes, I'm trying.
Do you know why the terms of reference were changed?
I've, I've, I was not part of the meeting. I.
The group of the changes?
I've not been pointed to the changes. I've not read the changes.
They pointed out exactly that. I think the reason for the difference.
Uh huh. The measure, where, where is the difference?
You will pick out.
The changes.
The changes to the HR committee terms of reference and the resolutions which were passed. Do you mean the code of the outcome of the job evaluation? One of the terms checked was to implement the findings of the job evaluation which was done. Just that we need time. This document is long.
Yeah, we, we discussed the, the, we discussed this later, the, the last time in detail and I, I thought we had explained the genesis of the letter and the reason why.
Yes.
It's in the absence of me being pointed to the specific issue that has changed.
Is the concern changed?
I made a loss.
Is whether council meetings proceed by way of meeting agendas. You call for a toilet paper procurement meeting, then turns out to be an HR terms of reference meeting. Is that how your meetings at council are running?
You've not shown me the change. That's not how they are run.
There is an invitation to attend the meeting. This is an invitation. Is that how they're done?
No, the, the council meetings are done by notice. They.
So what is done, what is sent down there is not in accordance with your.
Yeah, unless, the only procedure that a chairman can, can change unless there are items that can be brought to the attention of the chair of that meeting and you do what we call a chairman's consent. So if there is an agenda arising issue which uh cannot wait for some reason or another and the chair is convinced that it needs to be discussed, it will then be discussed, but it will be.
We didn't see that in the minutes. Does not appear.
It, it will be, I'm explaining the procedures because I didn't sit in this meeting. For example, if I'm sitting in a council meeting and somebody says that there is, there is damage to Moton Jeffry. Uh, like the last time in December, there was flooding in Moton Jeffry. If that is raised from the floor, you immediately consent as a chair and say, okay, let's deal with this urgent issue.
But would you then abandon your agenda, the main agenda which called for a meeting to produce tissues and stationery?
You, I'm.
Then go towards the HR.
I, I'm giving you the instances where a chair. I, I'm giving you the instances where a chairman, to say a chairman.
No, we understand, we understand.
You can change the, the.
We understand.
So it can change?
The, yes, the.
A meeting can turn out to become any other meeting at your council?
No, 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 no.
So what is the purpose of your agenda, according to your legal understanding, you are a legal practitioner, what is the purpose of an agenda?
The agenda is there, then there's what you call the chairman's consent.
I'm saying what is the purpose of an agenda?
Is to notify everybody so that people prepare and they know what they are coming to meet for.
Yes.
Yes, so.
So what is the agenda on that letter?
The agenda on this letter is for equipment, so if it dealt, maybe to answer your question, if it dealt with any other issues.
Was it, was that agenda, was it discussed?
Uh, the agenda, no, this agenda.
No, the agenda to draw procurement of toilet paper.
Yes, it was discussed.
Where was it recorded?
Um, I was at the commission during the time when this meeting was happening, so.
Resolution which came out of that meeting was to adopt a new terms of reference for the HR committees.
No, I think you're conflicting meetings, can you check, uh, this, this meeting is, uh, is, this meeting is different from this meeting? I, I think cross-check your facts, this, yeah.
But you have.
Yeah, 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 this is, this, these are two, they are completely two different meetings, yeah.
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to proceed because I was going to take the mayor through the five subsidiaries.
Yes.
Starting with City Park.
Yes, but meantime, just take that in.
Hmm, these are two different meetings.
Yes, because the subsidiaries.
But do you, do you still have questions? Because I have got threatening messages that I have. From Major Marara that he sent.
When?
To me, uh, let, let me.
When?
Just hold on.
Wait, hold on, yeah, that's very, no, no, not in this instance, but in October. Yes, no, I, I just want. Yes, on October last year.
The state of violence.
There is a picture of a severe head, uh, there's a, the, the.
Then, 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 then carry down.
Uh.
Dead clothing to testify.
Just hold on.
Just hold on.
His worship, the mayor was being interviewed by members of the press in connection with this proceedings and I'm requesting the honourable chair to have, uh, the witness word that inasmuch as he's free to exercise his freedom of speech, freedom of expression, that should not lead to the, uh, matter under discussion, thank you.
Yes, if, if this is true, uh, for me, you know very well that you are under oath, you are not supposed to discuss this matter, yes. Inasmuch as you want to tell the one or two things, there's a danger that you may misadventise. And we don't want a court of public opinion to ask and you will not move. Let us remain respectful with the process and the process until the matter is finalized.